Please rise as you are able. I call this meeting of City Council to order.
The city of Barre acknowledges the traditional territory of the Anishinaabe people, which include the Audawa, Ojibwe, and Barroso Tami Nations collectively known as the Three Fires Confederacy. We also acknowledge the Wendat Nation hereon who occupied these lands prior to the middle of the 17th century. We're dedicated to honoring Indigenous history and culture and recognize the enduring presence of Indigenous peoples on this land. We're committed to moving forward in the spirit of reconciliation and respect with all First Nations, Métis, and Inuit people. You may be seated. So I'd like to begin by welcoming back our student mayor, Kenshin Rivera, who's having a very exciting evening this evening after a full day of school. And we're also going to have the swearing in of a new student mayor as well. And that is Olivia Goglitz, representing Ferndale Woods Elementary School. So I'll call upon Tara MacArthur, coordinator of elections and special projects, to swear in our incoming student mayor.
Hi, state your name.
I, Olivia Goglitz, have been elected to the office of the student mayor for the period of April 9th to the April 30th, 2025. Do solemnly promise and declare that I will truly faithfully and impartially exercise this office to the best of my knowledge and ability, that I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in bias, corrupt, or any other improper manner, that I would disclose on any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interests Act, and thou truly faithfully he bear the true alliance of his majesty, King Charles III, and make a solemn promise and declaration, contritiously believing to be true and knowing that it is the same force and effect as if made under an oath.
Congratulations. Now you can walk around here and you're going to assume your seat.
Welcome to council, Olivia. And we're going to have everyone introduce themselves. So we'll start over to Ward 1.
Welcome to City Council, your worship. My name is Claire Reepman. I'm the councillor for Ward 1.
Welcome, Olivia. I am Craig Nixon, councillor Ward 2.
Hello, Olivia, your worship.
I'm Amy Corser. I'm the ward councillor for Ward 3.
Welcome aboard. I'm deputy mayor and ward councillor for Ward 5.
Welcome to the council, Olivia. My name is Nogusi Nogusi, Ward 6 councillor where Ferndale Woods School is located.
Good evening and welcome. I'm councillor Gary Harvey in the Holly area right beside where you live.
And welcome and congratulations, Olivia. I'm Jim Harris, councillor for Ward 8.
Welcoming councillor, your worship, Sir Jim Morales, Ward 9 councillor.
Hello and welcome. I'm Bryn Hamilton. I'm the Ward 10 councillor.
And I'm Mayor Alex Nuttall. It's very nice to meet you. Now, Olivia, before we get going into the evening, councillor Nogusi is going to be able to help you if you have any questions and maybe through some of the agendas. But I have one question for you. Do you have a strange old man with an English accent that lives beside you? Yes, you do. Right, Eric? That's wonderful. It's good to see you here. And I hope you enjoy your time as student mayor. That's my dad, for the record, yeah. John, there you go. Thanks. I mean, I thought it was funny before, but now everyone gets to laugh, right? Okay, we're gonna... I'm going to pay for that one. No Christmas presents for me, things like that. We're going to move into the confirmation of the minutes. And the minutes for the City Council meeting on March 26, 2025 have been circulated. Members of council, are there any corrections? Seeing none, we will move on to, if everyone's okay with it, changing the order for the presentation. And that's actually next. Look at that. And so I'm going to ask, first of all, this is recognition of National Poetry Month. And we have our poet laureate, Tanisha Thomas, who's here. So I'm going to ask Ty to come down and recognize that for us. And if you could approach the podium, if we can turn on the microphones, perfect. And you're going to be sharing one of your works with us this evening as well. And before, as you're on your way down, I see one of our former poet laureates here as well, Dr. Mayer. And it's nice to see you, sir. It's been a full five days. Wonderful, wonderful. Over to you, Ty.
Okay. Thank you guys so much for having me. It is National Poetry Month, and the theme this year is family. And I see so many people that have came, and it's great to be here and a part of the Barre family. So with that, the title of my poem is "Family", and I'm Tanisha Thomas, aka Ty the Poetess. And here we go. So this is titled "Family". To me, family is more than the ones I eat with over the holidays. Family are the people I feel the most safe with. Families know when you are going through something and give you time to heal or space without judgment. Family are the people I can only cry and laugh with. Families are not just the ones branched on my hereditary tree or the ones I share bloodlines with, but to me, family are the people I feel most safe with. Family members are the ones who forgive who are ever seeing an apology. Family are the ones who teach me without saying follow me. Families connect us like wedding bands forever is the love of family. According to Webster's Dictionary, a family is defined as a group of individuals related by blood, marriage, or adoption, or a group of individuals who live together under common household authority and have reciprocal duties. What I take from this is that families don't always have to share the same last names or hyphenated versions, but that those who choose to live in proximity with each other share roots that connect them. We are connected by communities, shared interests, spiritual connections, and friendships. We are all connected by sending our poetry to schools in the same district and by feeding our families with goods supplied by the same markets. Families can share generational curses, but each generation still aims to fulfill the same purpose, and that's to be better than the last. That's why we cannot ever forget things that happened in the past. Our family members are storytellers of history. This connecting from our family rests the risk of making mistakes again. From way back when tales were told, our power echoed. That stemmed from the unity of families. Families are not only connected by bloodlines, but by good times and shared time. By residing here in the city of Barre, like it or not, we have become a family. And my family is no longer just a tree, but it is a forest. And as I grow, I'm reaching my hand to help nurture. My daughter has her village, and it is only just begun to grow, the harvests that will bring will grow within this home. My family is no longer just a tree, but it is a forest. My daughter has her village. This twig will bark if ever her leaves are trampled on because she knows her history. She knows her roots. She knows that rotted roots can heal and bear fresh fruit. Most importantly, she knows that we are all connected like family. This seedling soon sapling knows the nourishment her roots brings and the importance of growing in a good environment. She knows strong communities are grounded in kindness. Our village knows that accountability is a requirement, not taking ownership of one's actions and time. My daughter and our youth know that it is important to speak the truth. They also know that family is given and chosen if we are lucky enough. The word "family" includes anyone who has love for you. If you are not created, the circle of life does not have something to ever play them. As newborns in diapers, our family endlessly provides for us, feeding and bathing us early in life, and as our family that cares for us again in the winter end, back in diapers. Our children now care for us like we are their newborns. My bloodline was moving through me. They knew the stories they told me when we defined my voice in poetry. And now, as the poet laureate of Barre, I can proudly say how happy I am to have included this family.
Ty the Poetess, thank you so much for that this evening. And it's, you know, usually once a year you're able to come out, but you're doing stuff all year round, right? And really such a great positive influence in our community. And so I want to thank you for that. Thank you for recognizing and bringing this forward for us tonight and for, obviously, your incredible artistic talent that you have for sharing it with us. Is there anything you'd like to say before?
Right through what you grow through. And I, I love you.
Amazing. Thank you so much, Ty. Well, that was awesome. We're going to take that break now. So I'm going to reconvene at 8:00 PM. And we will go from there.
Okay, members of council, we're going to come back. Again, we have our two awesome student mayors with us this evening. We're going to move past the reports of officers as there's none, and there are no deputations. Just to double check and make sure we cover ourselves off, has anyone in the audience like to make a deputation on CSC1, EXC1, CCS 001-25, FAC 001-25, or FIN 002-25? And there's none, there's no tax applications. In communications, I wanted to highlight my intention to introduce the rezoning bylaw under section 284.11.1 of the municipal act for 131 Lockhart Road. Earlier today, I requested the city clerk at a communication of my intention to introduce a bylaw to rezone 131 Lockhart Road from its current agricultural and environmental protection zoning in the town of Innisville. Zoning bylaw to general industrial and environmental protection on tonight's agenda. The bylaw will be considered by council after a statutory public meeting is held pursuant to the planning act. So that is just a communication for this evening. We're going to go into committee reports, and that's Deputy Mayor Thompson, 11.1.
Thank you, Mayor. Nettle moved by myself, seconded by councillor Harris, that section A of the general committee report dated April 9, 2025 be received.
It's moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson, seconded by councillor Harris. Section A of the general committee report dated April 9, 2025 be received. This is AFF 250319. Reported the affordability committee dated March 19th. EXC 250326 reported the executive committee dated March 26th, and CSC 250326 reported the community safety committee dated March 26th. Are there any questions or comments on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, and it carries. Deputy Mayor.
Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Harris, that section B of the general committee report dated April 9, 2025 be adopted.
It's moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson, seconded by councillor Harris, that section B of the general committee report dated April 9, 2025 be adopted. The CSC1 Short Term Rentals Regulation, EXC1 55-plus seniors space at Lampen Lane Community Center. NFIN 002-25 Tax Ratios for 2025. Any questions or comments with regards to section B? Seeing none, all those in favor, it carries. Deputy Mayor.
Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Harris, that section C of the general committee report dated April 9, 2025 be adopted.
It's moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson, seconded by councillor Harris, that section C of the general committee report dated April 9, 2025 be adopted. This is CCS 001-25, the needle collection kiosks. Any questions or concerns? Not seeing any, all those in favor, it carries. Deputy Mayor Thompson.
Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Harris, that section D of the general committee report dated April 9, 2025 be adopted.
It's moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson, seconded by councillor Harris, that section D of the general committee report dated April 9, 2025 be adopted. This is FAC 001 permitting of commercial motorized water support operators. Any questions or comments with regards to the motion on the floor? Seeing none, all those in favor, it carries. Deputy Mayor. There's no defer business or direct motions or presentations, so we're at inquiries, Deputy Mayor.
I have none, thank you.
Any inquiries on the table here this evening? Seeing none, we're gonna... I'm sorry, councillor.
Thank you, Mayor Nettle. First, I would like to say thank you to Mr. Prowse and his entire team. They have done a wonderful job cleaning up the fallen tree after, you know, the recent devastating storm, and nothing but great work. Please convey my appreciation to the entire team, Mr. Prowse. And I have a quick question. Can you provide probably to Mr. Prowse or Mr. Ferrari, is he still here? Can you provide us an update on the current status of cleaning up effort on main road parks and trails following the storm? And has there any been assessment of the total number of trees that damaged during this storm?
Mayor Nettle and members of council, let me start with the last question first, because it'll likely be the quickest and fastest. The number of trees, you know, basically all of them. So it's, it'll be tough for us to, you know, give you that number until we do a full assessment. I'll try and give you the Coles notes. Quick explanation of sort of where we are right now. We've, we've sort of come up with a four-phase approach. Phase one is complete, and that was opening up all the streets, making them passable. So that happened from March 29th to April 2nd. So that was completed April 3rd. We moved into the phase three. So during phase three, we're still going to be chipping and, and, you know, moving throughout the city. It's based on prioritization, safety concerns first. So, you know, we're working with Service Berry closely. They are, you know, providing us with information. If there's a, an emergency or something that's deemed life-threatening, our crews will address that right away. Right now, we're going sort of street by street, you know, a little bit randomly, you may notice. But that's based on safety concerns. So what I would like to remind everybody is, you know, we'll be back. Like if you see the street, you know, next year's done, and you didn't get yours done yet, we could be back two, three times. Don't panic. So as part of one of the next phases as well, we will be providing sort of a schedule of when we're going to be in that area, just so people know. So, you know, you can let your residents know. You don't have to rush and, and, you know, get everything cleaned up this weekend, you know, we'll, we'll take care of it. You know, we also have to do in phase three, the assessments of the trees as well, so health. As I said, you know, most of the trees have some sort of damage to them, so we'll have to send a, you know, crews and, and, you know, qualified people around to do tree assessments. So they'll be able to tell, you know, whether the tree can survive with a little bit of pruning, or whether it needs to come down right away. You know, so that, you know, that phase will take a lot longer. We've got over 200 trees in wooded areas, backing up EP areas. So if you back onto the RDU bluffs, there's a chance, you know, you may have a tree that's fallen in your backyard. So we'll get to those as well. You know, I can tell you that we've set up an incident command center today to try and deal with communications, helping out with Service Berry. The finance folks are involved as well, so all that stuff's happening. With regard to the municipal support from other municipalities, Vaughan and Richmond Hill are here. And we have London, Burlington, Cambridge, and Windsor will be here on, on Monday. We've got about 45 contractor crews working, so we've got a lot of folks out there, 150, 200 people. So we've, we're actually almost at max capacity now. Like, we've got, I think, everything that we need. But, you know, if I would, you know, say anything to the, to your residents, just, you know, let them know, don't panic. We'll be around. Make sure you report it to Service Berry, so it's all documented, because we get over 1,000 of those already. And we'll just work our way through them, and, you know, hopefully, you know, we'll get it done sooner than, than we think. Originally, we were thinking months and months, you know, we would, it's still going to be months, but, you know, we're making some, some good progress. If residents, you know, if they're getting a little tired of looking at the piles at the, on their boulevard, they also have the option to, to take things up to the landfill. So they do have extra hours. I believe they'll be doing extra hours again this weekend on, on Saturday and Sunday. So if you're tired of looking at it, you know, feel free to, to take it up there as well. So I hope that answers all your questions, and feel free to, to reach out to myself or my staff, and we'll, we'll do our best.
Thank you so much. That was perfect. And finally, I would like to say thank you to Mayor Nettle for coordinating and collaborating with different municipalities and the province. And I know you live in Ward 6, but thanks for coming and helping me clean up the sidewalks as well. So that's it.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Nettle. Actually, just to kind of segue off of that, I guess, just a little bit of clarification, so that way the public's aware. When we talk about the landfill, these trees are not going in the garbage dump. Just, just to confirm with staff, I don't know if Ms. Mack or Mr. Ferrari wants to touch base on how, how the actual trees are being dealt with.
Through you, Mayor Nettle, to councillor Harvey, we have quite an operation of processing the material ongoing now at the landfill. So Mr. Friary's team is working hard to chip it, to deal with it at the curb. We have Mtera getting the small material, the yard waste. We have drop-off material. I have numbers here, if anyone is interested. Over the last week, we accepted 5,600 customers for a total of just over 1,000 tons of brush. To put it in perspective, last April, we collected 700 tons for the entire month. So you can imagine, if you visit the landfill right now, you will see quite a significant pile. We are now working on grinding operation to grind that and to divert that material. It will not be going in the landfill. Anyway, we're excited to look after that material and to manage it as it comes off the curb.
Great, yeah, thank you. And the only reason I brought that up is because I did have a few inquiries where people were concerned that trees were going to be filling our dump, and I knew, I knew full well there was no way we were going to allow that. So thank you for all the work that you and your team are doing.
Thank you so much, councillor Harvey. Thank you to Mr. Friary and Ms. Mack for all the work the teams are doing as well and have been doing, and I'll maybe get into that a little bit more after this. Announcements, Deputy Mayor.
I have none, thank you.
Councillor Corser.
Yeah, thank you. The last week, beyond all the excitement of the ice storm and trees, I was able to go to two business events. One, well, one at Georgian College was Rise, the Research Innovation Scholarship and Entrepreneurship Series, which is an annual celebration of research, innovation, scholarship, and entrepreneurship at Georgian College, featuring industry leaders, innovators, and entrepreneurs. It's a really amazing event, and to me, every year, it's like getting tickets to a rock concert. So I really enjoyed that. There's so many bright ideas, and we are just, I'm just always amazed about the, the amount of brilliance that, every year that I see at Georgian College and what they bring there. And this, yesterday, I was at the Sandbox to see Terra Talks, which is an amazing event for women business entrepreneurs and executives. And it's a full-day event, and site with great discussions and panels and empowerment and valuable connections that were had. And this year's theme was Pitch, Promote, and Protect. So it was a combination of marketing and actual insurance and protection for your business. So it was absolutely fantastic. The Sandbox did a great job, and Invest Berry was a sponsor for that, and it was fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Corser. Councillor Morales.
Thank you, Mayor Nettle. And just wanted to announce on Wednesday, April 25th, at 6:30 PM and ending at 8 PM at the Berry Public Library, the Payne's Creek Branch, specifically the Massey Family Community Room. There's going to be a public open house for Berry's first, and hopefully first of many, privately-owned public spaces that is being proposed in the adjacent land to the library branch. So the publicly, privately-owned public space So the publicly, privately-owned public space would be located adjacent to Dean Avenue in the front yard of the building. Hence why there's a good synergy. It's though privately owned, but there's a synergy for the public to interact and use the space. And you'll be able to see the drawings of the open house. If you have any questions beforehand, you can email rduhamel, D U H A M E L, at jonesconsulting.com. And just for those aware, it's, it's an exciting project and we want to find a balance between getting feedback and cutting as much red tape. So this isn't, this isn't a referendum on the, on the project. It's moving forward. I'll be blunt. It's not a referendum to on like, like, should the, should the pops go there? It's a referendum on like, what do you think of this concept? And so just if, if, when residents can frame their expectations that way, hopefully there can be some feedback because I know the builder is excited to get going and I am quite impressed at the design too. So we want this to succeed so it can be as successful in the city of Berry as it has been in the city of Toronto the last 10 years.
Thank you, councillor Morales. Any other announcements? Okay, I'm seeing none. I did want to, and I actually had it in my notes this morning, to tell our CEO that there's another municipality offering to send help. But those are becoming harder and harder to coordinate. But I did want to take the opportunity to thank Mr. Friary, you and your staff specifically. Like, talk about just being pulled in on, you know, a natural disaster, basically, let's be honest, right? And just hitting it so well. We've had obviously a ton of damage and it's right across, right across the city. So thank you to your teams that have probably worked far more hours than they planned on in the last couple of weeks and really putting their families in the background. And the number of folks that work in the city of Berry and live around the city of Berry that were impacted, coming to work to help Berry families get their, you know, lives back in order after that and coming from a place where they don't have hydro or they have immense damage around them as well, I think is something that I really wanted to, to highlight. And just say thank you to everybody across the corporation. And Mr. CEO, if you can make sure you pass that right through because there's a lot of grateful attitudes out there for the response from the city of Berry. And if you don't have a grateful attitude, try driving outside of Berry to the north and see how bad things still are there. So thank you, Mr. Friary, to you and your team and for everything that you've done. And also with that, I do want to thank all of our municipalities that stepped up. It was interesting because we were trying to figure out how we get more crews when they've all been procured. And just a simple text message around got us some more crews and, and stuff. So it's, it's great that we have partners at big city mayors that were willing to step up and help us. And the final one, Electra, like, if, I can't believe how quickly we got the power back on. I say we, it wasn't any of us. It was Electra and all of the frontline workers that did that. But it was an immense effort. And I think that only happens when you're a part of an organization that has, you know, the excellence of the city of Berry, the excellence of Electra. And I think we're all very blessed that we live in the footprint that we do. And for those that don't live in that footprint, we will be working to make sure that the response is better next time if, if in fact it did fall short. In regards to, oh, this is a fun one. I feel like I'm on a talk show right now. The, we want to say thank you to Skyline Group of Companies. They have stepped up and pledged up to $250,000 for the flag that we've approved along Highway 400. And their generosity to our community is incredible. And their support for Canadian values and Canadian patriotism is incredible. And there's no doubt that this will serve as a landmark, a symbol for generations to come. As we see the ups and downs, I mean, we heard from the, from the investment team today, the ups and downs in the market are representative of the instability and uncertainty that exists and the trade war, literally war using economics and, and the interconnection of our economies to, to inflict really what is, what is pain around the dinner table and then kind of whiplash back that we're seeing even today. This, this flag will actually serve in the future to remind us that we can go it alone as a country in the sense that we have the strength to be able to build a capacity and to be strong going forward. And Electra, on that note, Electra actually stepped up yesterday, announced that they were going to move all procurement that they could back to Canada as well. Minister Leche, who's in charge of all of the, the utilities, then sent a letter to each and every utility across the province of Ontario saying that that is now the expectation. And it's just great seeing all of these, you know, portions of our community coming together. But huge, huge, huge give by the Skyline Group of Companies, and I can't say thank you enough. That is the end of my announcements for now, so we're going to move to bylaws, and that's you, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Nadel. Leave be granted, oh, sorry, moved by myself, seconded by councillor Harris. Leave be granted to introduce the following bills, and these bills be read a first, second, and third time on this day and finally passed, Bill 30 and 32.
It's moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson, seconded by councillor Harris. That leave be granted to introduce the following bills, and these bills be read a first, second, and third time this day and finally passed, Bills 031 and 032. Any questions or comments with regards to the motions? Seeing none, all those in favor. Carries. Deputy Mayor.
Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Harris. Leave be granted to introduce the, the following bill, and this bill be read a first, second, and third time on this day and finally passed, Bill 33.
It's moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson, seconded by councillor Harris. That leave be granted to introduce the following bill, and this bill be read a first, second, and third time this day and finally passed. This is Bill 33, the confirmation bylaw. Any questions or comments from members of council? Seeing none, all those in favor. And it carries. Could I have a mover and second for adjournment? I see Deputy Mayor and I see councillor Rittma. All those in favor. Carries unanimously. I hope everyone has a wonderful week.